Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, May 15, 2014. This is a meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. We have a quorum established. We have one member absent. And let's see if there's anyone in the audience who needs to address the commission? That needs to swear under oath? Okay. I guess not. Disposition of the minutes. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes of last meetings? And are there any questions, concerns, changes that you would like to make?
No, not really. I'm going to accept the minutes because I think I did it last time.
Good for you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
Yep.
Abstention.
One abstention. One salient abstention. Let's see. Cases? There are no cases before the planning commission today. Communications? I believe that Art Oestreich is not available today to speak, so we will...
My understanding is...
Okay.
Is Art coming down?
And we have no material regarding that.
Oh, Art's here.
Okay.
Perfect timing. Welcome.
Mr. Oestreich, do you want to just... We've already just brought you into communications. And let's see. First of all, do you swear to tell the planning commission the truth as far as you know it?
Absolutely.
Very good. Why don't you begin to tell us a little bit about your project?
You may want to be over at the podium.
And yes, you want to go to the podium?
Well, I just got some plans from the architect, but I haven't been able to look at them yet.
Okay. That could be difficult.
Basically, what's going on is we have kind of filled out our building, which is awesome. We still can't make enough product, which is another great problem. And kind of, it'd really help out to get some more space. And we'd like to go up a decent amount. Nowhere near the 44-foot line, I think that's out there in code. Probably around 27 to 33 feet tall, stretching back towards the Athens Molden Machine property. Wouldn't want to go... Excuse me. I'm trying to go kind of as far as we can, back towards that fence line back there. But you know, there's a manhole going down to, I want to say storm drains down there that we wouldn't cover. We'd stay just shy of that, so that was still accessible. And yeah, going up, have another loading dock as well, so we can more easily facilitate the stuff that we're up to. We are storing a lot of our, kind of the dry goods, you know, cans before they're filled with beer, kind of stuff, down at the end of East State Street. And it'd be real nice if we could have that onsite, as opposed to going to get it all the time. You know, we have enough to get us through a week, but it'd be nice to have a month. It would help out planning a whole bunch on our end if we were able to do that. You know, and that's kind of what we're hoping to do, kind of create another area where we can put in some more fermenters. And they would be, instead of going into 40-barrel fermenters like we do now, we'd probably do 120-barrel fermenters. Those tanks are about 26-foot tall. And well, we need them to be, we need to have 26-foot to be able to access the top of them and throw in hops in the top during fermentation to dry hop stuff. And/or throw raspberries in for the rasweet and stuff along those lines. And then yeah, it'd be nice if our empty shells of cans, we could stack them two or three high. That would help out a whole bunch as well. So just wanted, you know, keep everybody in the loop and make sure we're, you know, above boards. And I'm kind of planning it out accordingly with all parties involved and, you know, as we grow. And everybody's been awesome thus far and helping us grow and get this thing off its feet. We're in all counties of Ohio currently, about 1,400 accounts around the state and growing all the time. It's crazy to think 14 months ago, you could only find Jackie O's beer at 22 or 24 West Union Street in Casa. And all of a sudden, 14 months later, it's everywhere. We are in a couple counties of Kentucky, just ones that border the Ohio River. And that was, we're trying to stick with, you know, the sustainably crafted thing. So there's great IPAs all over the country. We don't need to be all over the country. We're focusing on here. And our, you know, pseudo-geographical local locations, trying to keep money in our backyards and our back pockets and support everybody around here and continue to go with that. Actually, last week, we put pawpaw wheat into a bottle and it got released statewide, and that's all over the place. And the internet and social media is flipping out about these sexy labels that are flying around. Find them in your local stores. Yeah, that's kind of the gist of it.
So the process, if I understand, you'll be doing a Title 41 process. And this is really just a preliminary communication.
Yep.
From what I'm hearing, there's no real variances needed in this process? Or... And the only concern, of course, is the placement of the manhole cover, I'm hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's something that I know is in the way and that would be part of the plans. We'd have to deal with that and where that goes. And then, yeah, just trying to be above board and, you know, make sure that I'm not going too far in the process, that it's just going to, that I'm not going to be able to do.
Okay.
Seems like it's easier to keep everybody above board.
That was my question also. They received a variance because of proximity to residential for manufacturing.
Right.
I would assume that stands. And I'm looking at Paul, but I know John's not here, so...
I would assume so as well.
Okay.
What John did originally is, because when I, when we started in the first place, I wanted to know if we could build out way back when in case, hopefully, we get to the point where I'm standing.
You are now, yeah.
And so he did the measurement from the edge of the property line, as opposed to the edge of the building. And so that way, with the idea being that we could almost build out entirely, you know, minus whatever, what's it called?
Setbacks.
Yes. Barring setbacks, so.
I do want to make you aware that something may be coming down the pipe in the future, and it may be pre-treatment required prior to discharging into the sanitary.
Okay.
Believe it or not, who would think we'd have this issue here in Athens? That we have, you know, breweries erupting, and we have the cider house rules, and we have a proposal for one on Columbus Road. So we're just, it may be something in the future that we'll...
Okay. About treating...
Pre-treatment prior to...
Probably dealing with the yeast or something like that, or some of the, any type of stuff that comes out, you know, that you'd be putting in the sanitary sewer.
Uh-huh.
As an industry, you know, most industries would have to check for metals. In their case, it's not metals, but it'd be biological or just pH and just have a system. No different than, you know, a pizza place that needs a grease trap. Something of that nature.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, there's plenty of systems out there, and a lot of municipalities do have guidelines to that situation. So there's equipment that's out there that can be gotten, similar to a grease trap and that, the same kind of...
Yeah. We don't really have that much interest to that. We've had to deal with this before. So we're on kind of new turf in that sense, too. I mean, you know, true, we have a lot of beer being flushed through systems, but not the same system.
Right.
You know what I mean?
It sounds really exciting. I am curious as to where you're storing out on East State Street. Are you leasing other property or...
We're, it's in the...
Tech Park, I saw.
Yeah, what's...
The McVee, right?
The McVee building.
Yeah.
There's just, so we have our loading dock at the Cheese Barn. Still call it the Cheese Barn.
You have to do something about that, too.
We call it the Brew Barn.
The Beer Barn. Okay, so at the Beer Barn, we've got, well, I'm calling it the brewery and the public house and the brew pub, whatever. I get lost in the words. So our loading dock, a 48-foot truck without a sleeper can get in. Anything bigger can't really get to our loading dock. And so for multiple reasons therein, it just made more sense when we get, when the cans come, empty shells, they're nine-foot tall pallets. And it's a full semi-load is the minimum order. And so we don't currently have room to put those 25 nine-foot pallets onsite anywhere. We can put six or eight of them. So we're sending them down there and then picking them up with the trailer.
Will this eliminate that, or will you still have to probably maintain a separate storage?
That's a good question. I don't know that we know yet. I think it depends on what we're able to build and how big we can go with it and stuff along those lines. We, I would imagine we probably will. There's certain things, like with our bottles, it's kind of a higher-end bottle. When we are able to get them, I think next time, we're buying a full semi-full, so that we have them. And, you know, we can plan accordingly then, because if we brewed the beer and then suddenly we can't get the bottles, then we don't know where to put the beer. We can put it into kegs, but yeah, different things are meant for different portfolios and whatnot. So yeah, it'd be, I have a feeling we'll probably keep the warehouse space.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, as I say, it sounds like it's a, I don't know, way to go, I guess, but there's still the process to Title 41, so...
We're discussing designating some of our meetings here to discuss corridor development. And much like Kellogg's used to have tours through their granaries, the process of making the cereal, would you ever have something like that with...
Absolutely. Very much. We've done a few tours. I probably have given two of you tours already, maybe three.
Athens Foundation, I think, was one.
Yeah. Where, just to bring people through, walk them through, show them what we're up to, learn a little bit about the process of making beer. I see it, I know it's kind of funny to say this, and every time people bring it up, I kind of giggle, but the elementary schools could have tours to come look at a facility that's producing things and the laboratory aspect of all that and stainless and that sort of thing. Obviously, there wouldn't be samples going out or anything along those lines, but, you know, that we would like to be facilitating those. That's another tourism draw. That's another way to get people down here. And we've got people coming up to the Brew Pub all the time, and we give tours up there all the time. And working towards a more scheduled Saturday morning, 10, 11, 12 tours, kind of stuff like that, booking online and things like that. But if organizations want to do it, we've, you know, never said no, so...
I was told the possibility of a bakery, too, in their location. Is that...
We're talking about that. So I don't know if anybody knows that up at the Brew Pub, all the bread products that we make there are all baked in-house. That's been a change over the past couple years, where, you know, we started with the burger buns and have kind of grown from there. Well, all of a sudden, the entities in the kitchen are both working in tight quarters. So both Justin and Junebug, everybody knows Junebug, Eric Layton, who's baking for us, they could both use that space. So we're talking about possibly putting Eric Junebug down at the brewery. We're having more of a commercial bakery, small-scale commercial bakery. But to get some food, you know, there, nothing against Jay Wamsley and the other food carts that we've had down there, but, you know, building that kind of thing. Where even out at the farm, we're growing things that kind of need process from time to time. It'd be nice to have a commercial facility right off the freeway, right there, that we could, you know, help facilitate those kinds of things.
Okay.
You know, and who's to say if that bread doesn't find its way to Columbus, to certain events? And we do a lot of events all around the state where we're bringing, well, Cavalier, the distributor, is bringing in eight or 10 or 12 or 24 kegs. And we show up with some produce and some bread, talk about the story, talk about what's going on, and it helps foster all sorts of different positive things for them and us and Athens and the area, so...
Well, I hope I can get a chance to talk with you in the next few weeks, just about Stimson Avenue. And I'm in charge of the Stimson part of the corridors that we're discussing.
I'd love that.
And, you know, just to get some input that you might like to share.
I'd be all about that.
Terrific.
Okay.
Got a question. Does your property butt on the old Abex property, the Molden Machine?
It does.
Okay. When we were doing this relief sewer, there was something weird about the way the sewer line went through there, and it, I hope it, Andy wasn't here. I go way back. And I wanted to make sure that, it may be a little bit different from what the maps say.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. Funny things that I've seen, and I have the original Cheese Barn blueprints, as well as the build-out, I think it was in 88 for the second room in the back. And some things aren't lining up exactly right, so...
Right. There might be some lines where you least expect them, is my...
Right.
And who knows what it means? It's, whoever was running the backhoe kind of made some decisions, probably, as much as I hate to say.
I was curious, does anybody know what's going on with Molden Machine?
No idea.
Mayor?
I haven't heard anything one way or the other.
But is it not one of the selected pieces of properties being promoted through EDC?
It's one of the, there's not enough manufacturing sites, so that's one they'd like to see developed. The biggest impediment, of course, is the floodplain issues. I actually have been approached by people saying that would be a great place for farmers' market, but again, you know, that...
Congestion.
Well, that's the thing. It's probably not, you know, the, who's, the board of the farmers' market is probably having a site selection criteria, and that's up to them to do that. Right now, as far as I know, it's not really, you know, a working piece of property, and it's one of the few manufacturing zones we have.
Right. Because I'd be interested in a sliver of that property for sure.
Sell some more beer and buy it.
Well, the question is, is who do you talk to?
I was told there's a guy there who's actually a caretaker. He's got a red pickup truck, and you'll see him in the morning.
Yeah, I've talked to him like 15 times, and I still can't get a call back from the numbers he gives me.
Oh, really? Interesting.
The ownership was up in Akron or Canton?
Right. And I've left messages in multiple places, and then one of the brothers is up in, somewhere in Canada, in Ontario, I want to say. And then somebody else is named Canton-Acron, and then I think there's something else to the south as well. And yeah, I just can't seem to get...
Maybe, again, I don't know enough about one way or the other, but the other one would be talk to Sarah Mars at the Economic Development Council.
Okay, yeah.
I know that she's, she always is looking at, you know, develop industrial sites or commercial sites, so maybe she has a better connection, or at least somebody that will respond.
Right. Because I've always, every time I talk about it, I hear the university wants...
A piece of it, yeah.
You know, and if the university wants it, well, they're going to get it. But, you know, nothing against anybody.
It's going, it's being broadcast right now.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah.
Pretty nice to put it to a real productive manufacturing use, though.
The biggest problem is improvements. It's just floodplain. I mean, so everything you're going to do is going to add on a dollar amount, right? Am I wrong on that? You know?
Well, but could, I mean, where the Cheese Barn was set up, they built it above that cheese, above the cheese line.
It's all cheese underneath.
Above the floodplain, just barely, you know? So anything that we build out, we want to be on that same plane for pallet jacks and moving product around. So we'll build up to that, you know? Is that what it is? You've just got to build up that foundation.
Yeah. But that means if you're doing a retrofitting building like that, if you improve it, it was 60% or 50%?
50. Greater than 50.
Yeah, you have to actually build, make it conforming to the floodplain, you know, elevation.
Unless you get a variance.
Or they get a variance through Title 25, yeah.
But I think for insurance purposes, we'd rather just build up above it anyways.
Yeah.
And maybe it's more upfront.
Well, that's it. FEMA is going to increase their rates. We know that from the last...
For new construction, you have to build above it.
Okay.
Some ramps.
That's a requirement.
But that would be to our plane of our ability.
Right. Now, your addition, we might have to double-check that to see what you're doing versus what the requirements are. But offhand, I don't think you have any issue. You can continue building.
Yeah, we've talked about it a couple weeks, and I think it works.
Right. Right. Yeah.
Complicated.
But Molden Machine, that's...
Big buck.
What's that?
Big buck.
Right. But most of the bucks are in the land, not in the building. So any improvements, I would think, you'd probably be building from scratch, tearing down this current structure and then...
No, it'd include the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
There's about three or four lots there, if I remember. It's been, it's been cut up. It's all in one ownership, but if you look at it, the parcels are fairly small.
I think it's about five acres. I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I thought it was a decent size.
Yeah, four, I think it's four, but something, yeah, four or five. Yeah, it's...
And conceptually, the people who approach us about, you know, who say, this would be a great place for a farmers' market, they would say, just got to make an open-air pavilion. So really, in terms of improvements, you would be adding money, you'd be subtracting in terms of the actual structure. And if you look at Title 25, most of the time, it has to do with the openings and make sure there is no impediment to flow, you know?
Right.
To flood flow.
They'd make good neighbors.
Yeah, right. No doubt about it.
They would.
But that's up to the Farmers Market Board and everybody.
Right. Well, yeah, I've heard that, too. I think that'd be a great place for that.
Getting in and out. Again, you talk about, what, a thousand cars in an hour or something like that?
But when we build the roundabout out on Stimson, everything will flow just swell as well.
Yeah. I love that roundabout.
They'll stop for your beer, too.
And the flyover that they're talking about.
That's terrible.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions or thoughts, sir? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Was there anything else that you wanted to add in there? And you'll be back then.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll be back, and I'll be talking again, but just preliminary, stake a few of your time and all that kind of stuff.
Terrific.
Sounds like you're going to move forward.
Thanks very much. I'd like to jump ahead and bring Paul into, if you want to do your report now.
I don't have anything today, so...
Okay, so...
I need it easy.
So we move along, back to communications and the Title 23 zoning code corridor discussions, continuation here. Mayor, did you have something that you wanted to offer?
Well, again, you think like I did a lot of work, but I didn't. Really, what I did is just put a packet together on what we have and what I was looking at. The first part of this, if you look at this sheet that I put together, it's actually one of three pages. I have it easy because Union Street is fairly, in the comprehensive plan, Phase 2, there's very little there, so I have a lot of room to play around it. What's interesting, and I highlight some of the stuff in yellow here, of course, was the, they talk about the industrial, Kenny Drive, which now road really is nearly built out. I'm not sure if I really agree with that, but that's one of the few manufacturing areas there. I also highlighted the existing conditions on page one here. A mixture of commercial, industrial, and office use. They also talk about the land use is dominated by fairgrounds, cemetery, and large industrial use is really is further out. The biggest player, of course, is actually the university in some of this area, if you look out towards the side of it. And that's really what we're talking about, is the cemetery is probably not going to change the footprint. The fairgrounds would always be one that would be up for grabs. That's a large footprint itself, and that could always change.
But a lot of floodplain, right?
Yes, it is a lot of floodplain. I was going to include floodplain map, but I did not, because I was going to just give you too much to deal with at that time. What's interesting is the, I think it's on the, Phase 2, page two or three on this one talks about Cartered and area development. It actually recommends rezoning the B3s to industrial.
Yeah.
And I point that out because it's interesting that they put that in place there. And again, at this point, we're talking about past Shaver Street area, I believe.
Probably way past it now.
Way past it, yeah. And that's when I started thinking about it, too. The other one, of course, is transportation. They talk about, the other highlight on page two or three is actually changing the, making a brick structure. We could use that printed brick structure for the bike path that cuts across Union. That, as traffic picks up there, it's been harder and harder to deal with people going across. That's one of the complaints I've heard over time. Whether that's actually a zoning or at the level of planning commission is another matter entirely. But this will become more of a problem as things pick up over on 56, 682, and Union Street.
It reminds me of that Hawk Signal proposal that we talked about at the East State Street safety study. That is indeed the mast arms that go across, and it's a push to stop. They're not cheap. They're like $50,000, but...
Could they just stop, get off their bikes, and walk across the street?
But sometimes they have to sit there for a while and watch, you know? The traffic can get pretty continuous at times. I've watched that.
Yeah, I know. Morning rush. Rush minute, rush minute.
Okay. So, you know, and again, I'm just looking in terms, it talks about motorized and non-motorized. And again, I have it easy because there wasn't a lot. Of the three pages, ones are tightly mapped there. One of the things in page three of three, of course, and I say it's actually three pages because I spread it out, and it's the second to the last bullet there is existing gaps and sidewalks. We have major holes in that sidewalk process there. True, we have the bike path that goes parallel to it along the way, but it really doesn't line up to it. Having conversations, I'm trying to remember the last conversation, I had somebody who said, really, we don't have enough cut across for industry or to get to Union Street businesses, so to speak. I don't know if I agree with that. I think they were, their proposal, of course, was, actually, what, the conversation started actually on Columbus Road about our gas station that we have there. They would say, why don't you put a coffee shop in there? Because we just don't have enough, you know, watering holes or, you know, luncheonettes or whatever it is along the bike path. And I'm thinking, I'm not sure if we can, we want to run a coffee shop in our building, but you can see where it might work. At the same time, I know Catalyst Cafe is there, and that would be a cut, you know, but what they're talking about is the bike path itself. The limitation of that is it strays away from any of the carters like West Union or even Stimson. There's only a couple places intersection.
I bet a lot of people would like to have a road there.
A road? Oh, yeah, probably, yes.
I mean, down Courier, because that is really, I mean, it would really change. There was a proposal really early to connect that side of town.
You're talking about Union and West State Street?
Yep.
Union and Columbus Road.
And blue line. Oh, Columbus Road. Well, okay.
It won't happen. It's still...
No, not right now. Okay. And essentially, the other pages I put in here were the proposed, I highlight the zones that exist. And I went all the way up to Uptown at that point. Some of the other maps, and I made extra maps, the two, of, the map that's presented in the comprehensive plan is 2.38 map, and it's really not readable. It actually looks much better before I printed it, tried making copies. The zoning, of course, did the same thing, so to speak. What I've given you, two separate maps, and you should have two of these maps. One being is, this is the draft of the extension that we're talking about with the county for a sewer system. And that would be this one right here.
Yep. Yep, I recognize that one.
Yeah, okay. It's still in draft form. The reason I mention it, because you'll see that Union Street is part of that proposed initial survey bounty, the blue. That's to be at the top of the map, right there, the very top. This one right here, Jeff, did I give you an extra copy of that? It should be a loose piece, loose leaf piece. Okay. There's essentially two maps there. One, I actually have duplicates of, but when I copied it five times in a row, you just lost the lot lines on it. The reason why I show this one is because this is where any, you know, this is where the infrastructure may or may not go. We're still in negotiations with county. You can tell that what they're proposing is pretty much a loop going up Union, Radford Road, and then down 50 again.
Yeah, but you'll notice that Radford Road, all of a sudden, you're going out 50, deadheading about a mile extra.
Yeah, yeah. Heavardsville, Heavardsville is in the future area. Again, I think what you're seeing with the county, of course, is they're trying to address the subdivisions that are out there right now that are built out.
Beale is about the end of it. Yeah, somebody whispered in their ears.
Full Hill Heights, yeah.
Full View Heights, yeah.
Well, you know, they're trying to fix a problem out there. And we, again, we're still in negotiation.
But Full View Heights is north of that. It's not in the right spot.
Oh, it isn't?
That's, that's an industrial area out there, Carter Lumber and the rest. If Beale's in the right place.
Radford, yeah, that is.
Then Full View Heights is up there, across from, I don't know.
No, I think it's right, I think Full View is just on one side by Carter's.
What's north and west of Carter's?
Yeah. And this would be, actually, I saw north and east, kind of. If I'm looking at this map there.
I think there's something wrong with this map.
There could be. Again, this is draft, and it's from.
I don't trust.
It may be more just their title assignments, because you can see that, yeah.
Who made the maps?
HDR, Jennifer Fromer. One of your students, isn't it?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's one of my cronies.
Okay. So, this is the big picture part. And I say that because really, when you look at, my Carter, which is 56, is not a lot in there. You know, it will extend out. And that's the question we have to look and say in the future, what do we want to see out there? What would be annex? What would be service? And you're looking, I'm not doing this part. That's 50. I'm doing this part over here, Nancy.
I know, but I'm getting really disconcerted, because if you're making decisions on the basis of this map, you are making some bad decisions.
We haven't made any decisions yet. And Paul Loog, City Planner, would probably agree with you about bad decisions, okay?
Oh, yeah, but look where New Rad is. I mean, it's just crazy, because they're tributaries on. Paul, we gotta talk. We have to talk.
Okay.
It's bad.
Would they have failing septic systems in these different subdivisions?
Well, good.
If you say so. It all ends up in Margaret's Creek, doesn't it?
I mean, I say good if you're going to solve the problem, but it would be good to know where the problem is.
I think they, I think a lot of them have a good idea of where the problem is. Really, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to stop you on that. I just.
No, that's okay. You can see where the corporation limit is.
I'll map to a geographer.
Yeah, I know. That was a mistake. I'm going to take these maps away from you.
Oh, it's horrible.
[laughing]
It is no good. It probably costs $50,000, too.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ray.
She needs that.
You're in order.
Really, the reason why I show this map is because, you know, we, when we look, I'm looking at the West Union Carter, most of it is built out in Henn Town. It was not owned by the larger institutions, so the shift is not going to be that great. If you look at the, the plan mentions the fact that some of the Red Shaffer Street is really what you're talking about, and Low Shaffer between Siemens, of course. Because we have, but we don't have a lot of, you know, residential at that point. The last map I'm going to show you, of course, is the lots out there, because the lots are fairly large. And this is the Carter going from, what you're looking at here is this Kenny Drive, the turnaround where you have, what is this, Turtle Run is down at the left-hand, right-hand corner, bottom right-hand corner, I believe. Ellie's Field Road, Turtle Run. Let's see, what's the other one? Gibson, I think, is the other section that goes behind. What you're looking at in the center, those two large ones would be where Third Sun is now and Bedrock Rental is. And then you come around the curve. What I, of course, is that you've got Kenny Drive is, which is pretty much developed. You have this other section to the other side, though. You can see large swaths of land there with large plots. Not even, they don't even front 56, but you can see there's room for development. And I didn't even cover the stuff that's past.
Do we have corporation lines in here, or you said?
No, I don't. I didn't put them in there.
But there's a real steep slope.
Yes.
And that's.
It's the creek, Paula.
It's a creek.
Okay.
Anything to the north or west of the creek is outside of the city.
Is outside the city land?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the things that was brought up, and I think our Public Works Director would bring into the mix, of course, is that in terms of railroad spurs, we're stuck, there's only some, a short area that we have any contiguous, continuity, I guess is the word, with anything that we could use for railroad. And in terms of industry, that's what most people would say would be a good place to start things. Not that you can build a spur easily, not that CXX wants to build one easily, but the fact is that you'd have that, it's not, it's north fork and southern, isn't it? I forget.
It's the only opening, operating one in town.
Yes, it is. But that, this is where we overlap the most in terms of rail.
From Huntington to Point North.
Yeah. So you look at this, and I should have actually taken, this is from the GIS. I could have taken the GIS further down to the south of the Kenny Drive, and UPS is at the bottom here, because that's where the other, and where Numberfest is occurring right now.
Exactly right. I was thinking, there is our solution to Numberfest.
Well.
Industrialize it.
Industrialize. Well, okay. Now we're back, okay, that's part of the planning that's really off Union, West Union, but important to West Union, because we're talking about this map here, where the development's going to occur, you know, and what's it going to look like in terms of industrial, and where are we going to go with that? This is, this is part of the mix. So, the little, what was the word, not cogent, what was the other one?
Salient.
Salient points are, is one, is that a lot of the stuff that's in the city is already pretty much developed. The, if anything, there's going to be intensification and a slow morphing from the residential to commercial. The recommendation from the comprehensive plan was actually to go to not so much B, but industrial or manufacturing side of it. But again, that's not really anything that's going to happen between here and the, and 682. Anything that would occur would actually be further down between 682 to the city property line, although most of the potential is outside the city corporation. And, you know, you look at 56 going out to the property line, which would be, you know, Kenny Drive, and most of it is uphill, downhill, university on one side, Margaret's Creek on the other side, you know. Right now, ODOT's in the midst of revamping their place. The footprint's going to probably not change in terms of the lot, but in terms of what's there.
Capacity will be greater when, actually, we need, and Mayor, more from 682 back up to Shaffer, you know, High University's talking about this medical corridor, so you could see the expansion of medical facilities along that.
Realizing, of course, we've got two things that should be problematic on that. One is floodplain, the other is wellhead. Not that that's a big wellhead area.
Oh, it's a problem.
Well, you know, that, and philosophically, do we want to put our medical Carter in a place that, you know, could flood? I mean, if we have a hundred-year flood, we're not going to have a hospital, our shopping will be cut off from the rest of the world.
I would contend they could not build.
Anywhere else.
Like, well, we would not have another hospital basement issue. That's, that just wouldn't occur.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering how a medical zone versus a manufacturing zone would work versus the same thing.
A medical zone? Probably that would be B3. I mean, basically, it'd be a service, professional service. And actually, you can, you know, realize, we can have doctors' offices on R1s, but that, not that we're going to call the Oblenis.
But I think they have bigger plans than the small office.
It would be nice if they shared them, wouldn't it?
I'm working on it.
I think it's looking to be more like a major medical campus. It's evolving.
And the traffic patterns that will occur at that point.
Have you seen anything like that?
It's just conceptual right now. Now, they already have grants for.
Is that the answer is yes?
I have not seen anything on paper. I just continue to hear the discussion about where do we locate this new neurological science, diabetes combined, and is that going to take over a recreational field there? And so then you've got the Oblenis campus.
Well, essentially, you have a lot of land that needs something on it, because nature, of course, back.
I guess.
And they will fill it.
And what are we supposed to install to test you?
I guess.
That's illegal.
Well, the trend is right now, these, these medical institutions, whether it's Ohio Health, or Heritage COM, or what is it, Holzer, Adena, they all, they all have to grow or shrivel at this point. I mean, this, they, well, no, it's the nature of the medical business, as far as I can tell. And I'm not an expert at that, but.
We took 58ers and done one in the osteoanalysis, where they can't.
They also have one up in Case, too.
But this gift is specific to the Athens campus. This, this gift is specific to the Athens campus. And then what was, what was, what did I hear today? That the College of Osteopathic Medicine may want to move out of a dorm. So where, where are they going?
Well, they have.
Parks, you mean, yeah.
You mean, what's out of the.
The dorm being parks, well.
Oh, right.
You know what? They haven't taken care of it.
So change is definitely a coming, and I believe it is indeed coming down Union.
That's why I wanted to know if it wasn't a thing as a medical zone per se.
No.
That'd be more like a global aid type of thing to find a law.
Why would you call it a medical zone? It'd still be professional services and a business.
I guess so.
The trouble is that there are all these little externalities that aren't being accounted for in such a development. And for us to sit here and talk about it, I mean, you're scaring me, Paul.
Well, yeah, I scare myself, too.
I mean, because all the, I mean, no, they don't, well, it'll be, look great conceptually. But, you know, what about the traffic flow? What about the kids going to Beacon? And what about all those other things?
Well, okay, this is one thing where I only did so much homework, because when you look at the existing conditions.
More than I did.
Existing conditions of transportation and the proposed transportation things, and this is page one and two, three, of course. They talk about the intersection of bike paths in Union should be improved, but they also talk about the intersection between 682 and 56. I know we improved some of that a little bit.
We did, great cost.
But there's still a lot, and there's still a lot of work for that. And if you look at the discussion of trying to extend three lanes, 56 should be widened to three lanes between 682 and the railroad tracks, which is going towards Kenny Drive in that direction, there's room for actually some, some expansion there, but not a lot. Again, we, you know, it's, first of all, I realize, everything we're talking about is state route at this point, you know. So we'd be doing it on our, because it's inside the city.
And ODOT has already started the process, right?
Yes. Well, they started ramping up their area, yes. Then they haven't made it a super two, that's for sure. And then if you're talking about the Carter, medical Carter, which is really, you're talking about anything to, adjacent to either the fairgrounds is one possibility, and/or Oblenis footprint widening out, Union Street is barely adequate at that point, you know. So, although they have a lot of room to expand, I mean, basically, we could always stretch some of this stuff out, but it'll no longer be a pedestrian-friendly area.
Well, they own the Human Resources Building. They own the green space next to there.
Between that and Robins, Lucky Cat.
Right. And then, you know, who knows if additional purchases, they're going to have.
They own a couple of those houses on the other side of Robins, too, that they did not tear down.
Would they knock down Human Resources?
No. That used to be Athens Lumber. So they own that, yes.
No, no, I said, would they knock it down? Because it's certainly not designed for medical. Could.
I don't think that'd be part of the medical. I think it'd be further out.
Let me ask a question, then, about 56 on this area where we're widening it theoretically to three. If you go back and look at this place on the ground.
Yeah.
Other than the bottling company and UPS, the rest are pretty much, oh, you're looking, you like looking at it that way.
No, I was just, I'm just looking at it this way, because I'm trying to picture it. Okay, well, go ahead. Continue.
This, I mean, this is.
You can go back to the way you were.
I was just having.
North.
Yep. What was, this is the seat cover manufacturing.
TS Trim, TS Tech.
And nothing is going on there, right?
No, it's full, right now, it's full of construction material for the, the parking lot's full of construction material for the dorms that are being, south.
Oh, okay, so nothing is going on.
No, wait a second, TS Tech is using it. Everybody thinks.
They're renting it out?
No, they're using it, they're renting out the parking lot, but they're using the rest of it interior.
Storage?
I have no idea. I know they have employees, but I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
You have a number?
How many? It's.
Twelve, fourteen.
No, I thought about 20, 20 to 25, I thought.
So you have, and then.
But I'm just guessing.
And then you had that record distributor.
Yeah.
And then the rest is all open.
Yes. Which is, which is why I highlight the first page where it says the industrial area Kenny Road is really, is nearly built out. And I don't think it is.
You could demolish both of those buildings and not lose anything, right? Because we have infrastructure out there that could be used.
Actually, what would you do with it besides this? What's being done? TS Trim?
Well, you know, I don't own it. But if I did, I guess I'd look at it as a way, you know, and maybe there's another question, like who's competing and all the rest, but it's a pretty decent warehouse.
I would look at the lots at the back cul-de-sac. I think TS Tech owns those, and they're not willing to give it up.
Yep, and they're.
And putting, let me put on two seconds my economic development hat. I know, talking to Sarah Mars, is that the request you get is, we would like 200,000 square feet, a building that you have out there to do this, something that we can reuse, something that doesn't look too old and is cheap. This is why, you know.
The emphasis is on cheap, of course.
No. Nothing we have around here is cheap.
That's right.
Just because, you know.
Too much, I'm sorry, I think there's a wall there.
Yeah, kicking me there. This is why, maybe I'm going to sit over here next time and let you kick RJ a lot.
Just move back.
We're going to have to separate them.
We're separating them.
Okay, so really, again, what you're saying is most, most of the buildings we have are too small for what people want. They want at least 40,000 square feet. And then, and they would like even bigger if possible, you know.
Well, let's go back to.
So to tear this one down would be a waste.
Yeah, I know. But if I go back and look at what all the successes this administration has had with employment increases, they didn't have railroad siding. They were part of a bigger structure. So maybe what we should do is get somebody who's an entrepreneur to buy this and carve it up and use it for those type of things.
Your assumption is that is not being used now. I think it is being used.
Well, with 20 employees, you know, again.
At storage or warehousing for the Grand, what is it, Canal Winchester, I believe. I'm just guessing. I don't know. Last conversation we had with somebody with TS Trim, I asked how many people, and that was about two years ago.
Well, my assumption is just based on a rational world, where you don't have this constricted thing, and maybe it is a good deal. But if there's a lot of competition, maybe you give them more money. I mean, it's not a, either, you know, I don't have the money or the interest in redoing it, but I think that's, there's certainly an opportunity on West Union out here. But I do think the back part is zoned, what, R?
No, it's manufacturing. I think that whole back part.
I don't know. Unless they had it rezoned.
Okay, here, let's look at this map here. You've got that in your package. You probably even have it in your, I see you have a whole comprehensive plan. This is Kenny Drive right here. And that whole section goes, in fact, you can see it actually links up with Ellie's.
And there was a proposal, but then, I think this is the back part.
Yeah, I think so, too.
That's, and that's what?
Oh, R1? That's R1 back there, yeah.
Yeah. Because I think they hedged their bets, because they thought they weren't sure they'd get the industrial.
Well, okay, if I'm looking at that line, I assume that's, unfortunately, I chopped it off with this map here, but I have to assume that the back end is still, the whole cul-de-sac there is still manufacturing.
We're just talking hypothetical, because we don't know.
Yeah, yeah. We do that all the time. Everybody does that all the time.
I'm freezing.
Are you freezing? You're going to cut this short and see.
Okay, I really, should I put something together so I can have a feel?
I think this is really good.
That's just, I pulled off the GIS.
I mean, the whole discussion.
Yeah, and I think we need to continue it, obviously. We all, you still have R.
I went to the same source and have mine all written out like this.
Basically, let's keep needing.
Realize, I got the resources to do this type of stuff, so I can print these things up. And the fact is, I'm really trying to wrap my head around the future possibilities rather than what exists, because, and how much do, you know, the conversation we had with the, with the negotiation with the county is that the assumption is we're going to develop that sewer system out there, and as a result, we're probably not going to, there's a certain area we'll probably annex into it. So we'll have to put that in the mix as well. And where do.
Wait a minute, they're going to build a sewer system, right?
They've built a sewer system, they're going to plug into us, yes.
I was worried about that one.
Well, you should be worried about it just the same. If Paul is the planner, because there's no zoning out there, so who knows what can occur unless we take, we pull it in. You could end up with a cheese factory on Radford Road, right next to your house.
My house is not on Radford Road.
I know. But your, your friends and neighbors over there who.
Well, you know, the, there's also the idea that some of the people like the fact that there's no.
Sure.
Definitely.
We know.
It is the third rail to even discuss it.
Yeah.
They like it right now, when there's not, when development is really controlled by the fact that there's no sewer. That's.
But I thought you were going to control the sewer, the sewer taps by the number of people that are currently there.
Yes.
Unless you're going to horribly overbuild it.
Don't, don't say I'm going to.
No, that's the proposal from the county. And again, the planner has been quite vocal insating, if you create this ripe economic development, developable land out there that's going to be outside the city and not generating the taxes for the city.
That was the whole principle. That's why I talked to all those council members that were reluctant into doing it, take care of the problem, and then if you expand, ooh.
The way the dialogue right now is going, we haven't seen the latest proposal, those should be coming out as soon as later, is that we're going to be putting, talking about a set number of taps out there. And of course, the conversation goes to, well, there'll be a little wiggle room in there. And you, you've sat through the regional planning, where you've got realtors who are saying, well, how many are going to be out there, and who gets those, you know, because they're developing.
Yeah.
At the same time, you know, the quality of what those taps are, we have industrial, commercial, and residential. And those are big boxes, no different, when I say big box, I mean, that's no different than a B's, one, two, and three, which is why we're having this discussion, because we're trying to fine tune our zoning. And, you know, and the concern from, you know, council members and the planners is that we could get a migration of not only residents, but also industry going out there. And look, that's the only place the railroad tracks intersect over is on 56 there. Somebody could say, whatever.
But once again, I'll repeat, all the new jobs that have been created here, when other people were creating them, had no railroad access.
No, they're not.
I mean, that's just, that's something 1950s, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. Same thing with our industrial and manufacturing code. It assumes that it's all where, it's, it's heavy industry and it's a smokestack industry.
Whereas it's lab and it's, you need a good electric service and parking and water and.
Broadband, the whole works.
I mean broadband, yeah.
Yeah, well, good electrical service is critical, too. You know, one of the things we, you were in council when we used to hear everybody on East State Street saying, the power went out, I can't run my register.
Yeah, or I can't keep my, my little growths growing.
Gross growing?
You know, you used to do that, the little cells, cells, whatever you're doing.
Cells.
It's been a long time since I thought about that.
Petri dishes.
Yeah, your petri dishes.
Oh, incubators, I see, yeah. Yeah, you need control, climate control for that.
Well, I guess I'll come next time and talk about Columbus Road, where they've got a lot of pie in the sky ideas.
Yeah, there you go.
But I think this one's more interesting. So we're going to rezone this part out here more industrial?
That's the recommendation of our plan from 2005.
I just sort of groaned from Paula.
Do you, do you think, Mayor, there's nothing to say that we can't, like, re-take what you've done here and through the planning commission's discussion, and basically create, rewrite the corridor sections of the existing comprehensive plan, and use this information and add to it, and basically file it as an addendum.
Delete it.
Or an update to that section of the plan, and we could do that for each one of these corridors, since the corridors are covered in the current plan. So if we wanted to make recommendations for different zoning, zoning changes or issues at the intersections or anything like that, we could do that through this process and then send that up to council to adopt revisions to sections of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
I hadn't thought about it until right now I started looking through this, and that's basically how you approached it, is saying, what does the plan say, and what's still salient, and what's no longer salient, right?
I still have homework to do, because I look at the transportation part, and I know we've improved the intersection since this riding, 56 and 682, but I know it's not adequate.
It's adequate now.
It's adequate now, but if we're trying to, okay, if we're trying to zone appropriately, what do we want to see happen to that intersection for once we do that? The other one, of course, is, I haven't read that article that you put out there about the corridors and the transax, transax, transaction.
Transfuct.
Yeah, that would be the other thing to look at, say, okay, we're, how do we, you know, you know, downtown is obvious. It's downtown pedestrians-focused, et cetera. Out to Schaefer's probably still pedestrian-focused and out there.
Yes, definitely.
The next wedge there is from Schaefer to probably the bike path. That's, that's still residential for some of it. You look at the townhouse.